Well, there's different ways to approach it. Currently, the onus of the sidewalks has been on the homeowner. It hasn't been on the city. So I guess the question is, is what does the council want to utilize? If they're going to go for, you know, revenue generating option, do they want to use a portion of that money for sidewalks? That's really a question of the council. And then how do we deal with going forward with maintenance and that? Are we going to have, are we going to make that an issue with the council of the city? There's a, I guess you could do it if you wanted to do it that way. That's really, but currently the way, the way the practice is, I mean, it is the onus of the homeowner.
Steve, wasn't it two years ago we went around and everybody marked everything and we kind of went around and grandfathered in? As of this date, because the city hadn't acted 30 years privately to enforce it, we would give you a one-time grace period. The city came around and fixed a lot of that. And then after that was done, then it wasn't going to be started enforcing it after that?
There was quite a few sidewalks that were fixed and replaced during that time period, but there was grant money available to make those fix. And we were never told to, as far, I'm trying to recall, I do recall some of this happening, but to start the enforcement was the decision of the council. And we never really got to clear direction on whether or not to drop hammers on people to fix their sidewalks. And really, the ordinance is in place and that is the law of land is whether or not you want to enforce it or not. Because it is in place to do so now.
It doesn't have much teeth, unfortunately. That's, that's the problem I have here. But I do want to mention too, that in the last few years, there have been some very nice tools that have become available to us, such as Zillow or GRDR, those for sale websites where we can find those houses that are for sale and do an inspection on them. So some of that stuff has come along that I think will help this process a bit if we do want to enforce a sidewalk replacement program before the house transfers ownership. So I want to say that that's, that's more beneficial now than probably was four or five years ago.
I think, Grant, I've had to get a permit, that might be a hundred dollars, to have them come in inspected.
And we have a permit too. It's a fifty dollar permit. And what we propose to do is inspect the forms, which is what we do now.
For work in the right way.
Yeah, we don't pour the concrete, we just inspect the forms and make sure it's up to our standard.
But that's only when somebody decides to make a replacement.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Now, question, fortunately I don't pay much attention, but aren't the majority of the corners already have ramps down? They may not be ADA wide ones and stuff, but there are many places that you just have a curb, like, eighty percent of them have ramps already?
I was just going to say, I can't give you a percentage. I haven't really studied it all that well, but generally they have been putting dump downs in on curbs of the sidewalks where they're already the street.
But where I walk, are you guys noticing a lot of curbs, like, or people that ride bikes? I know, guess a lot of ride on the sidewalk, but a lot of, but I just, I don't know that there's a ton of them that don't have the dump downs now.
I can't give you the exact amount. In the spring, when I start running in the neighborhood at lunch, that's when I notice them. And I notice a lot of the cracked sidewalks and the lifting sidewalks.
What I notice is there's a lot of out-of-con duty to our sidewalks. It's there, then it stops, and it's there, then it stops. And I know Rich would like to have uniform sidewalks all over, but I mean, I think it would be safe too, but...
Yeah, I would think of the sidewalk as a network, just like we think of roads too. It's really, it's a way for pedestrian to get from one point to another point. And to complete that network is really beneficial to the entire community. So I do support a better sidewalk network.
Yep, and there are a lot of places that there's an inch or two offset that is a trip hazard for people and it becomes a liability for the homeowner. I think we need to enforce those that may have already been labeled red. I know that if you pull a building permit, I believe, then you have to bring the sidewalk up too. I guess maybe that's in the ordinance we used to approve. But I think that if you do an addition or different things and there's not a sidewalk in front of your home that you'll be required to at that point.
That, that is correct, Alex. In full disclosure, the house that I'm building and buying, we have a sidewalk waiver because they couldn't pour it until it was past frost laws. So we actually have, Rich has granted a waiver for it. And there's three houses that are being developed in this area. So waiver's been drafted in. I've even ensured, put it in my, in my purchase agreement, that it will get addressed under the standards set by the city. And what we're seeing more and more now, things that come to us, we're saying, we are, we are being a lot more stringent on making sure that the sidewalks are, especially for the new builds, the construction that we are getting, we are a lot more stringent on that.
Right, and that section where you are moving to, that was a missing section in the sidewalk network. And so that was an important piece to include to the chagrin of the builders and homeowners, but it's going to cost a little bit, but it has to happen.
But, you know, the studies that we've had done walkable communities are what attract people and we have a great community here and that's something that we need to work on and continue to improve. But I, I have trouble forcing somebody to spend twenty-five hundred to upgrade to that type of, which sounds like they don't have to anyways, if it's not a federal project.
Now, what I gave you is the worst case scenario. My professional opinion is I would address the red sidewalks immediately, put the people on yellow sidewalks on notice that in a year or two, they're probably going to have to replace two, three, five sections of sidewalk at whatever square is going for. I know you have no contracted price.
Twenty-eight bucks a square foot, so five by five is twenty-five square feet, so eight times twenty-five, if you do the math, that's, it's up there now. Up two hundred bucks, up doing the math right?
Yes, sure.
Okay, good.
So we just moved a bunch of money, right, from the whole sidewalk plan to just the ADA part?
Yeah, that's going to city apartments and...
Yeah, kind of just...
Kind of elaborate the situation we had there. Well, when we, when we first arrived, there was a, we had received a grant for replacing these red and yellow sidewalks. Large portion of them were in the DDA district. And our former mayor pushed forward to use DDA funds to address those rather than the grant funds. So that kind of really brought us into a situation, because we needed to use the funds and we needed to use funds. A lot of those red areas were addressed. So we need to actually go back and find and reassess those red areas. But one of the other issues we had was with the sidewalk match. The sidewalk match programs are very tough to administer unless you get the person, the other, the homeowner to put their money up front. Because one of the things is, you have the grant, it's your grant fund, but the concern is using tax dollars out in front of, of this one is clearly a private, for function of a private homeowner.
Now, about thirty years ago, a property that I owned in town, we put sidewalks in and was able to put it on our taxes and spread it out for a few years. There was a program like that. I know, we don't, we're not really in the banking or loan business, but they did do that in the past.
If I remember correctly, I think the city council had voted that if you were ratted in, fix it, the city would fix it, repair it, and then building any property there.
Are you calling me a rat? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying, I'm just recalling the conversation from the city.
No, it was voluntary at the time, but they, the city did have a program. I know we're limited in our funds, but that was a way that it could be spread out to help homeowners for something. The tough thing that I see, and maybe we should send something out in our billings for light and power and water bills and stuff, that this program is going to be enforced on the sale of homes. Then you have the problem of the guy like me that doesn't list it with a realtor and just sells it. You know, at that point, the assessor would catch it that there was a sale. And at that point, it might have to, that's why we need to notify people that we're going to enforce it more accurately. But, you know, we want to let people know and then try to stay on top of that. But I agree with Chief that we, the ones that are a hazard, you know, we have an opportunity, there's a little pool of money when somebody says their, sells their house, because property values are rising so quickly low now that there's going to be money there for them to make these repairs and get it done.
Starting to force in the red ones, and then with what notices, utility bills?
Why don't, why don't we administratively come up with a plan to address the red ones in the sidewalk?
Everybody going in?
Yep.
Yes, I'm good.
Okay. Item F, MDOT traffic study. Chief?
A few weeks ago, the city manager, public works director and myself met with members from the Michigan Department of Transportation or MDOT to discuss a Main Street crosswalk at the River Walk, as well as a traffic speed study that MDOT would like to conduct. During this meeting, they disclosed to us that the last traffic study was conducted in nineteen eighty-nine. And put that in perspective, I was graduating high school back in nineteen eighty-nine. Long overdue for a traffic study for Main Street. MDOT's requesting, in order to do this study, that the council pass a resolution for a speed traffic study on Main Street with your approval. So since we're almost thirty years out, I'd recommend that the city council agrees this resolution for a traffic speed study on Main Street and pass resolution five dash eighteen.
There's no cost to us?
No cost, Alex. I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution oh five dash one eight for our traffic study on Main Street.
I'll support. Chief, Teresa?
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips is absent. Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Campfield?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Item G, the Look Fund designation to the Grand Rapids Foundation. Michael?
Yes. At the November eighth, two thousand seven Look Community Foundation meeting, the board reviewed their investment strategy. They have diversified accounts, however, not necessarily a long-term strategy. It was discussed to place approximately three hundred thousand dollars of their funds into an account with the Grand Rapids Community Foundation. This was done to have a well-invested strategy for this fund and allow for an endowment to be carried on. They were also interested in the rate of return for this fund. Currently, these funds are generating very little interest in the accounts that you have currently. The foundation board took action to recommend placing those funds in this account. I spoke with chairman Chris Godbold about this to better understand their intent. My concern was once these funds went into the community, into the Grand Rapids Community Fund, we can never get control of the entire fund back. It would only be supplied to us based on the interest generated. My other concern was that we needed Grand Rapids Community Fund to approve recommendations from this board. I have experienced in some instances where a metropolitan community fund board would not approve utilizing the funds in the manner requested by the designee of the account. In addition, I was concerned this would be the same process we have with the Engelhardt Memorial Fund that I sit on the board for where we, where the GRCF ultimately approves the requests. I was concerned about giving up this level of control for a portion of our Look Foundation funds. I was able to research this in greater detail and to correct that once these funds, once we transfer those funds, we can never get back in, in full, the amount in a full single or class, it would be, it would be endowed. I also learned though, that we would not need board action from the GRCF regarding actions made by the Look Foundation Board. What I, what I later found out was, it was identical to what we do with the LCTV funds. And so once I learned those items, I was satisfied with the recommendation of the Look Foundation Board. And I'm recommending that the city council approve the recommendation of the Look Community Foundation Board and allow for the three hundred thousand dollar transfer of investment funds to the Grand Rapids Community Foundation.
When you say these funds are endowed, that means we could request them back, but until wherever they were invested, we wouldn't get that money back? But in five years, we might get it back?
Well, you can never get the, basically what happens, once they're endowed, you basically capture the principal off of it, or, I'm sorry, the interest off it. So a lot of times you're making payments off the interest.
Right.
So that, that money...
So we never get that money back then?
Correct.
It says here you wouldn't get back in one swat.
Yeah, I mean, I, maybe I worded it wrong, but yeah.
But it's, once you give it to them, it's theirs to manage and you just get the proceeds.
You get the, yes.
Okay. And we're not getting much for interest now where it's at, so it makes sense to let somebody that knows what they're doing invest it and increase the return.
Correct.
Now, would there be a limitation of what those funds could be spent down then? What, what does that mean?
The Look Foundation has a certain function that as long as the requests are made in base, procedurally to the, to the fund, we can...
Okay.
One of my concerns is, I've, I've had experiences where people have designated funds with the Metropolitan Community Foundation, not Grand Rapids, that they wanted to use their funds for a community good and the, it had to go to the Metropolitan Community Fund for that, the parent board for that approval, and they weren't allowed to do that. And that was, that was my fear here. I didn't want that to happen, that, that the local control was taken away. And, and I was, I was satisfied that that won't be an issue here.
Very good.
I take a motion and we approve the recommendation of the Look Community Foundation Board and allow the transfer of three hundred thousand dollars in funds to the Grand Rapids Community Foundation to manage and get a greater return.
I'll support discussion on it. Teresa?
Councilmember Phillips is absent. Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Campfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
And Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Last item, approval of the fiscal year nineteen budget calendar.
We are beginning to prepare for the upcoming fiscal year twenty nineteen budget. My responsibility in the city charter is to provide the council with a balanced budget. I will ensure this occurs by the third Monday in April, as the city charter requires me to. While it is obviously important to engage with the council and general public regarding the proposed budget, I am recording a budget session as we did last year on September twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen. Department directors will be presenting their budget line item by line item on that day. Public hearing for the budget hearing would be held on May twenty-first, two thousand eighteen. The city council can approve the budget that evening, or if we need to make changes, we can do so. I've given you a number of dates to consider throughout our entire process. The ones that really obviously you would need to, to know is April sixteenth, you would be receiving your budget. April twenty-eighth would be the work session. You'd be sitting in the public hearing on the first May. City council meeting with the public hearing held the second one, and then adoption after that, July first fiscal year. So, and the council can make any changes they want to fit. And the city manager will be, will look into any budgetary items you may wish for me to consider. I am recommending the city council approve the budget schedules presented.
I will say that it was, I thought it was a great process last year, a lot smoother than the year before.
With that, I'll make a motion to put the budget schedule passed, presented.
I'll support. Any changes? Teresa?
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Campfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
And Councilmember Phillips is absent.
Another board and commission reports. Jim?
We have our LCTV meeting presented to us on the sixteenth, and then it will be on the twenty-eighth to discuss where it goes.
Very good. Great.
Both the Lara and the Parks and Recs have the five-year plans available for review, and we're looking for public input on those that will help us to get grants as we apply for them for the trails and things. So just the community can access those here at city hall, the library, and both townships for the Lara and locally for the Lowell Plan.
Mike?
I have nothing that we got. Thursday night is Lowell Light Power, and then following Monday is Planning Commission.
Very good. And I have not had one this month. They have fire authority next Monday. I'll move to you for your report.
Couple of items. First off, I want to address the matter that the city looked into. Obviously, we're all aware of the situation currently in the Rockford Plainfield Township area regarding the detection of PFOS in the municipal water supply. Obviously, with that issue, and not too long ago, there were some issues in the village of Sparta where they had detected some PFOS. I had requested our staff to, to have testing done of our, of our municipal water supply to determine if there were any levels in our water system. I was pretty confident that we didn't have any, but for peace of mind for the residents, people who work for the city, people who work in the city, well, city administration, city council, I had requested those tests. Now, these tests are not nor, like your normal water test. We do water sampling tests all the time. Our normal water sampling test procedures do not treat for PFOS. As a matter of fact, PFOS is a relatively new, it's something that's really popped up in the last six, seven months statewide. DEQ is really now starting to, to get more involvement. So we had to order specialized tests, and these tests are, are, they're very specific. One of the things that they require is, there's two people that administer the tests. And what, what they're not allowed to do is, they're not allowed to utilize any detergent, soap, lotion. They're not allowed to eat fast food for a few days prior to the tests. They're not allowed to eat microloin popcorn, because everything of those touch, anything of those that you touch, they, they have PFOS. So they came in and what they do is, there's two people coming to this test. One person just opens the doors and guides the sampler. The other person takes the sample. And both are, they're, they're, they're free of any of the, of the possible contaminants. So they did that test, they ran it through. Flesen Van den Brink is, is doing these tests for a number of communities across West Michigan, across the state. And I'm pleased to announce that there was no detection of any levels in our municipal water supply in any of our wells. And I'm pleased to announce that, that it's not going to be an issue here in the, in the city of Lowell, which is, which is a relief. We have no, I have notified both the supervisors in Lowell Township and Regent's Township since they both are customers to our water supply and inform them of this. And I'm very pleased that there'll be a resolution to that matter. Couple other things.
I just want to say thanks, Mike, for doing that, thinking of that and being proactive, because that's such a huge issue when you look at how it's affecting Rockford and these other areas and just shows the quality of our leadership that you got that handled.
Yeah, I just wanted, I, I wanted to know for sure. I, I think it was, to me, I couldn't not know. And I don't think that was, that's fair to any of the residents in our city not to know or who is a customer of our water supplies. So I'm, I'm pleased that we did that. A couple of weeks ago, myself, as we mentioned earlier, myself, Rich LaMombard, Steve Buchola, we met with Dennis Kent and other members of MDOT and had a very good meeting regarding some of the, some of the issues in the downtown district with pedestrian traffic. One of the positive things is that we are looking at possibly some sort of a, of a crosswalk, of a signalized crosswalk for, to, to slow down, for, to allow pedestrians to cross at the showboat. That is something that we still need to work with MDOT on in a little bit greater detail. There's a couple of things we need to do on our end, but they were open to that. Now, in regards to a possible left-hand turn lane, the, MDOT informed us that they did not believe there was enough traffic count yet to judge the, judge the turn lane. However, they were open to consideration. It was not something that they, that we, that we, that they blew us off of. So I think that that was very positive as well. I was, I was glad to, glad to see that. So all in all, it was a very good meeting. I think it was a step in the right direction. And I know we need to reengage with MDOT here pretty soon on our end and a couple of things, so we can start possibly moving over on some of these things later this spring. Just a reminder, I know we had to cancel the session with Lou Bender. It will be Wednesday, March seventh. Be at the fire station. I have more information to follow. I'm going to ask Rich to speak briefly about what was going on over at Bowes Street last couple days, or last couple of weeks with the, with the...
The road closure.
Of course, I mean, yeah, with the road closure.
Uh, we found that the water treatment plant was, the main sewer line from the water treatment plant to the road was made of asbestos pipe material, and it had collapsed over the course of the last thirty years. So we had to replace that. And that's what forced the closure of Bowes for a few days. Then we had a little bit of void to fill, of course, because when you get a collapse like that, it does suck some of the, the sand and dirt around the pipe. So that's why it took a few days. But we do have, have it repaired now and should be back up in order. And it was just shocking to me that asbestos pipe would just fall apart like that, but it did.
How much did you have to replace the pipe?
Uh, they've got back, I know at least onto the property. I don't know if we have to go to the building that's quite ill to dig through.
So there's additional asbestos pipe?
There is additional pipe there, yeah. And it's fairly common. Asbestos was a fairly common material back then, and that's on the waste side, so it shouldn't affect anybody.
Was that six inch or four inch?
I think it was six, I think. From what they told me, they had a hard time getting back to a piece of solid pipe. And, excuse me, I would assume it was six at that, that size of facility. So that's our Bowes Street drama.
Thanks, Rich. Dan Burton, just a reminder, Dan Burton will be here, international walkability expert, will be in town eight fifteen. I'll have more information to follow. That will be a very interesting day. If you can, if the council members can make it, I would strongly suggest that you attend. I also want to thank the council and, and Rich for handling, taking, taking over my presence for, while I was away, dealing with my family issue a couple of weeks ago. And I, I heard Rich did an excellent job. I watched the video. He did an excellent job.
Fantastic.
And now I have a little competition. So competition's a good thing. Well, kind of to add a little bit further with Rich, people probably, obviously with the headlines, obviously know some of the issues that I've had to, had to address in my first semi, of your eighteen months next month. So last year, if you really estimated the time that I spent dealing with issues, seventy percent of my time was dealt with dealing with the issue of six twenty-five CHAM and the issues we had with the police department. That was my, pretty much my whole year last year. And obviously, a lot of things that probably needed to be done by the city manager couldn't be done because those major issues really took up all of my time. And as a result, a lot of people stepped up and did a lot of different things outside their, what they normally do, and I was very appreciative of that. Rich definitely probably stepped up, took a, took a much more global role in the, in the administration of this organization. Took in, took a lot, took on a lot of positions, took on a lot of roles and things that, you know, that just being the director of public works, he went above and beyond. And a lot of things that, that had to, that had to get done, he took care of for me. And really was doing a lot of the executive level stuff to, to kind of help me so I could deal with those issues. It's also been apparent to me in, in the last couple of months that Rich's, what's, Rich's abilities and capabilities are, are very strong and he's, he's, he's an excellent administrator. And it was obvi, it was, it was apparent to me because I, I knew it was most likely going to happen was, there was a strong possibility we were going to lose Rich to, to a neighbor in jurisdiction who is a much larger jurisdiction, and there's a lot of, there's a, there's, there's a lot of opportunity for him that quite frankly, a smaller community cannot provide. Knowing that, I felt that for the stability of this organization, in which we need more than anything right now, in my opinion, is stability, and the things that have gone, with the past history, I believe Rich is, Rich is bringing that stability in place, especially in the Department of Public Works. Because of all of those issues, I am elevating Rich to the position of assistant city manager. He will be, he will still be doing everything he does as public works administrator that's not changing, but he is going to be taking a more global approach to, to the management of this organization. And we've had this discussion and we've been talking about it actually for quite a bit of time, and I felt it was necessary in order to make sure that stability of the organization continued for the next few years, because I think there's a lot of good positive projects work on, on the way. A lot of good things happen in the city, city. And I think the most important thing we need right now is stability. And, and I think the team we have in place right now brings that, and Rich definitely enhances that as well. So I'm, I'm making it public tonight that he is going to be elevated to that position. And that's all I have.
New date? All right, well, we'll move on then to appointments. We have planning commission applications. Anthony Allison, Kelly Bremeyer, really good applications for both of them. It sounds like Kelly, not to check with Teresa, you know how long we have to wait?
I think she said till April.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure. She's not been in the city yet either, so she can be appointed, but she can't start to serve until April later, June, but I can look into it. And Anthony Allison's ready to go right now. Really good applications of council consensus. I'll contact the bulk tomorrow.
Could she sit in that boat?
I, yeah, and I, she can show up just as, yeah, yep. And I, she can show up just as, yeah, yep. And I can let her know that, Ron, I think David Killen did that with light and power as well, attended the meetings, so we knew who was gonna sit on. So with you guys, his approval, I'll contact the board tomorrow. Good?
Good.
All right. Other council comments?
I have nothing, thanks.
Rick?
Nothing.
All right. I do, but I'll wait. All right, and I don't have anything either, so that makes it your turn again.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight twenty.
Support?
Oh, those in favor.
Yes.
Yes.